Order roll call.
Chisel.
Here.
Neal.
Yeah, yeah.
You turn the volume up just a little bit. Carlson.
Here.
Luce.
Here.
Bergen.
Here.
Hadley.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Okay, and can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Due to the public response following the first reading and due to the special time and day of this special session, I am accepting public comment prior to council's consideration for ordinance 1257. I will ask that if somebody spoke on Monday, that they allow somebody else to speak today. If some of you have the same thought or if there's your time in a group, let maybe a spokesman do. Just to be clear and allow enough time for everybody to be able to have it. We have people online as well. And I'll let Chopper or Chad kind of watch that. So I believe there's one person that you have somebody that wanted to speak on the floor. Maybe you didn't have, but somebody brought something to you.
Well, I've got the petition that went around with
And then did
493 signatures.
You want to come up here, please?
Good morning. Thank you very long as the opportunity to speak. My name is Richard Reiser. I'm a business owner in town. And I just want you to know that many people living around Decorah have been very disappointed with the city council's meeting that we took place on Monday night. It was deemed as an open forum where you could hear the views about your mask mandate that's proposed. We quickly learned that the council had already made up their minds. They'd already tallied up their six to one vote to pass the mandate. So nothing that was said at that meeting was going to matter. And you guys already had everything made up. I just astounded me. That's very sad. It's very hard for you to gain the trust of your constituents when you make up decisions before people even get a chance to talk about it. You're not, you're supposed to represent the people. You're not supposed to dictate to them. But the good thing is, is your guys' actions, you woke up a sleeping bear. Their citizens very upset. Tuesday evening, I was talking to some people. They decided to start a petition because they wanted you to know that they do not agree with your mask mandate. And believe me, I was amazed at the response we got. Tuesday morning, I stuck a copy of a sheet for people to sign on my Facebook post. And in 15 minutes, I had the first signature. And last night about nine o'clock when we closed the office, we had almost 500 signatures amassed in 36 hours. And that doesn't get to the people that couldn't get there because they were out of town and it was only day and a half notice. Excuse me. There's groups of people that made phone calls, face-to-face discussions. They shared that petition on how many times on Facebook, but it was a lot. I was up till one o'clock this morning tallying things up, putting this together just because I wanted to make sure I got all the thoughts down. But in 36 hours, you get almost 500 people that tell you, no, this isn't right. We don't agree with it. That says a lot to me. Many of those people are not against wearing masks. They're not against being out in the public. And if businesses ask them to wear a mask, they're not opposed to wearing them when they come in their business. But they don't like being told exactly what they have to do. You have to do this. You can't disagree with any of us. They're forced to wear them. You've already heard of your business community because I've heard from a number of people that they've been contacted by people from in town and out of town that said they will not shop in Decorah. They will not come to Decorah because of the mask mandate. I heard from one business owner said they already had two cancellations from people they had bookings with that they were not coming to town. And they were going to cancel those and not come back. Who's going to, who's going to do the, pay them that lost revenue? That's hurting the city. That's hurting all the businesses that, who's going to pay that revenue for those people when they lose that? And that, that's their livelihood. Those businesses aren't going to survive. What business is going to want to come to Decorah when they know they, people aren't going to come here to shop? Okay? Which one of you guys has the answers to that? That's what I want to know. Who's got the answers to all those questions that people have? Now, it appalls me that you come to a, come to a meeting, we could six foot social distance up there. If you can't put Plexiglas between there so you protect yourselves from each other. But be here to sit down and talk to the people and listen to what they have to say face to face. Drives me crazy. I put these signatures in a binder. All the signatures that are in there. That's people that have either been living Decorah, shopping Decorah, working Decorah, or any ties to Decorah that are really upset about this. There may not be citizens that are in town, but they're all either one of those three things. Let's help our business community, not hurt it. I understand the strongly recommended words of the county board of health, and I agree with that. As Councilwoman Neal stated, educate people on use of masks. If it's your true intention to educate, then why put a fine on it? Why not get information out there? Tell people about it. Ask them to do it. But educate the people that aren't wearing masks. But make sure if that's your true intentions, you do the education. You don't do the punitive damages. Thanks again for your time.
And that, that binder will be in the city. You guys will hold that at the city.
One will take it, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I, can I make a point of clarity just because I feel like you asked a question? Answer questions.
I'm going to let people speak first.
Okay, I just know that people wanted some answers to questions and I didn't know how we wanted to do that.
Okay. I'm going to let a couple more speak and then I'll take guidance from the council. How about that? And then if you are online and you weren't, if you go to the bottom of your screen and over to the right, I believe, depending upon what you're looking at, you can raise your hand. There's the, as if there is somebody in the chat room now put a question in there if you want to speak in person. Okay, next. Right up here, please.
My name is Renee Carlson, 111 East Water Street, and I have a small business downtown and I am very disappointed. It almost brings me to tears how this is dividing our community. I have had three people in the last two days, good clients of mine, say they will not come to Decorah. They will not shop here. They won't come to my store. I am down 45% for the month of August. I had one lady in my fitting room yesterday that practically passed out. I had a quick grab her a chair. Now I deal with a lot of people that are going through cancer, autoimmune issues. You bet I put a mask on. But education, it's important, but don't mandate it. I hope you can hear us all. Because we do care. Thank you very much.
Pass on to the, I'm going to pass on to the council that the room, all the chairs are pretty much filled. Just so that you have an idea of how many people out here. Okay, is there, there's one over here if you need him to talk.
I want to, thank you.
Could you just say your name in there, please?
Doug Bryce, 603 D3. I want to thank you mayor and council for an opportunity to speak. I want to set a precedent. Things already has been set well. Of respect towards you guys and honor. I know I had strong words in our local news media. They were civil. They were, they, and did not refrain from personal attacks. What I want to address really quickly is, is not the same as the other night. I realize that there is no educational ordinance initiatives in this ordinance. And so to call it, anything to do with educational is a misnomer or you know, an accident or deceptive or however you want to face it, it is, it is commands, threats and punishment. That's what this ordinance is. It's not educational. There's no initiatives in that. Out of the 17 wherethes, I won't go through all of them, but I wanted to back up my thoughts I'd said in the paper. Only two of them actually carry weight to consider moving from a forced or voluntary system to a forced system of mask wearing. Really quickly, and I'm not going to go through all my arguments. I have them there if you want to talk with me privately. I would like to do that. The one I do want to address is whereas two, three and four. Number four, the whole rule. Idea. Number four in the whereas clearly states that you have here that it cannot be inconsistent with state stat law. State statute is how it's put online. And it is inconsistent with state statute. That's why the mayor rightly understood and you guys rightly understood the necessity to write to her, which I have documented in my information from decorahnews.com. But repeatedly, the reporter says she's asking for permission. She herself says she's asking for permission. And so you don't have permission to do this. It will be toothless and it will not stand up in the court of law at all. And I'm not my lawyer, but I can read and I can comprehend. You don't realize, but two more of your wherethes undercut your own reasoning and weakened your position. And that will, those would be 14 ones, the different ones was talking about Luther College doing things. And we want to be proactive, which is number 13. My paper, right. And number 14, you talk about how Luther College is already doing this and the core public schools are doing this. And so you have these things that are showing that people are already doing this. You're undercutting your own argument and reasoning by saying this. Now, the last one I want to address is number six. And saying this, this rise is a very small percentage rise in Winnebago County. And there's an implication saying that there's this rise of cases in Winnebago County. The implication is the danger and the death. As of yesterday, 119 confirmed cases, one death from an elderly person who had had other complications. It's not, and then flattening the curve. Let me address that one quick. Time Magazine, August 8th, this year says the US has flattened the curve. That addresses another whereas. It takes another one out. So that's not, you have two, a small rise and people coming in as visitors. But I don't think those students necessitate changing from a voluntary system, which for the past seven months has proved superbly successful because of the people of Decorah. I don't, I don't think the negotiating power say, hey, these, these two, there's a small rise in Winnebago County numbers and we have a lot of people coming in. And we're doing well voluntarily. And I think the educational part would be amazing, mayor, if we could get it on the radio, different type of things. Luther's doing their part. We're already being proactive. We're being successful. There's no education in the ordinance. It's commands, threats, punishment. So let's educate and do that. And I thank you for your time and I hope that you're seeing our hearts and all this. We aren't, we're not just hard heads who don't care. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Your person speak before I go to the council. And I don't believe you spoke on Monday, correct?
I wasn't here.
Okay, just make it short and I'm sorry.
Harlan Stafford from 402 over Broadway and speaking really regarding Winnebago County tourism and development. Social distancing and trying to keep us safe is a really important feature of all of this and education as well. And I think that as, as we've seen this pandemic grow and then shrink, people have been coming to Winnebago County in Decorah because they love it here. We've got the rivers, the streams, the hiking trails and all that. And even though when you're outside, technically this, if you're more than six feet away from people, you're not going to have to wear a mask. People aren't going to read this ordinance and know that. So people are perceiving that you just have to wear a mask all the time. And so I believe that, and I think there was a council person that thought that maybe people visiting here early on was actually negative because it was exposing us. And I think the idea that we have all this beauty and the people can be outdoors and actually social distance in a very safe way is a good thing. And so I think we should be promoting those assets that we have to bring people here to enjoy this community and do it in a safe way. And I don't think this helps that. I think if we just really were supporting the idea of everybody wearing masks and being social distancing and doing the right thing, we would accomplish a lot more. So thank you very much for all your work.
Go to the council.
You have one online with a hand raised.
Okay, I'm going to, I'll let the person speak and then I will look to see what the, in the chat room, there's somebody in the chat. Emily, did you want to speak?
Yeah, so I guess I just wanted to address some of the, the points that were brought up. And the only reason I would like to is that I then got letters saying that we didn't address the things that were brought up. So I guess I felt like maybe this time people would like to hear our thoughts on their comments as well. So the first I think that comes to mind because it was brought up a couple of times is this idea of if we are saying we want this to be an education forward policy, why then the mandate? So just to help what people understand, it is not as if you're going to be walking around without a mask and someone's going to slap you with a fine, first off. The first step in this ordinance is that education piece. And, and that would be the role of our public safety. It would be the role of other folks, you know, businesses to say, look, in Decorah, we require masks for the safety of both our tourists and our citizens. And then if that same individual at another point in time is not wearing a mask at that point, then they are given a written educational piece of advice that says, or an educational statement written down that says, hey, this is a warning. This is now your second warning and you need to be wearing a mask when indoors or when you're outdoors in gatherings where you can't maintain six feet from other people. And then there is a fine, much like a parking ticket. It is a $10 fine on a third offense. So I guess in my mind, and I think the rest of the council, we're feeling as though we're really putting the education.
Emily, hold on, hold on, Emily.
We're sorry we got skipped over to a TV channel.
Okay. Then the other thing I, I think that I would really like to clear up that is early on in this process, we talked about visitors coming to our community. I did. And I talked about visitors coming to our community, not because I didn't want them to come. But when I made that statement, it was a time when people were asked to stay at home. And that is very different than where we are now. It is also unfortunate that when you say something as a council member, you will have a snippet of a quote and not the whole thing. And it is very much because I value the visitors that come to our community and I value our community that I think the mask mandate is important. Because what it does is it allows people to be together in spaces without risking this threat of the coronavirus. To say that this virus isn't a problem is short sighted. 160,000 Americans have died from coronavirus. 160,000. In Decorah, we have seen, yes, rapidly rising cases. And what that shows us is that unfortunately, what we have been doing isn't working. We have more cases. I think we had eight cases yesterday. And no, hopefully eight of those people will not get really sick and eight of them will not die. But what we don't know are the long-term impacts, how it will affect the next eight people who get it. And until we do, I'd like to follow the best science of our time right now. And the best science says where there are mandates and people wear masks, the virus is slowed. And then the other, I guess, I can let other council members if they want to address other questions. But I do, I do echo that I am very saddened by how much this is dividing our community. And I think one of the reasons that many businesses came to us in support of the mandate is because they felt like if there's a mandate by the council and there's a citywide policy, then it isn't on any one person. It isn't on any, well, this store supports masks and this store doesn't, right? It is a community that supports masks throughout it. And so I think we heard from plenty of businesses and organizations and individuals who felt like if there was a mandate, it would actually help stop the divide in our community over who's wearing a masks and who's not. We live in a time, in a highly politically charged time, and unfortunately, masks have become politicized. Masks are not a political statement. Masks are a health requirement, a health need, a health statement. And I guess by thinking about a mandate in that manner, I feel like the way in which we could move forward without the division is honestly, is everybody's wearing a mask. So I guess those are some of the things I'd say at this moment and open it up to other council members.
We're having time for the council people to talk during the discussion on it. But is there any other council person that wishes to speak at this time? Okay.
Yeah, if, if this is going to go to roll call, then I would.
Not, not yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
We do have one person in the chat room. What is the question in the chat room? I just want to make sure I cover that as well.
I think that's Linda.
Chopper, can you tell me who's in the chat room?
Linda's had her hand up for a while.
Okay, Linda. She's, you got unmute her or she has unmuted herself. There you go. Please state your name and your address.
Linda Silver. I live at 722 Ridge Road.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, my boyfriend and I just returned from a trip to New Mexico and in which there is a strong mask mandate, both inside and outside. And so I strongly support a mask mandate. They have far better outcomes. They don't see rising cases in the way that we do. And I even think the penalties should be more severe. So I definitely am in support of it because I'm very concerned. You might say that the rising cases are a small proportion, but they are rising. And I would like to see everyone like collectively take some action. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, right. Okay, we have, no, we've got somebody else. Is there anybody else that has their hand raised? I'm not seeing them.
Tim Borsset.
Yeah.
Tim Borsset.
Indeed. Thank you so very much. Tim Borsset, 1002 Woodside Court. Hey, guys, I really appreciate a second opportunity to address this issue. That is huge for you guys to go out of your way to do this. I would just like to quite definitively state that on behalf of my congregation as a pastor and I think on behalf of a clear majority of my regular customers as a businessman, that there really is no desire to create a violent conflict or conduct ourselves recklessly over this mask mandate. I'd say a far-reaching majority of Decorah citizens and Americans in general are gracious and law-abiding citizens. And I think that this is the premise that we have to start from. That the people of Decorah, they want to do the right thing. But that altruistic ethic also resists being forced under penalty of fines to do the right thing. That's the pushback that you're getting here. It's not about public health. It's about the freedom to make your own choices. I, I think that much can be learned from our own history on the Spanish flu in this matter. Some places in the United States at that time attempted to enforce mask wearing, but experienced similar resistance citing government mandates and, and threats to their, that, that government mandates would be a threat to their civil liberties. I, I think a much more effective approach that proved effective during the 1918 Spanish flu pandemic, and I think that would be effective for the 2020 COVID-19 pandemic, is to implement an aggressive and persuasive promotional campaign calling out the better nature of the Decorah citizens to make personal sacrifices for a greater good. In 1918, one Oregon newspaper ran an ad encouraging mask wearing, saying, "We appeal to your civil patriotism to cooperate with us in our effort to stamp out the Spanish influenza or flu plague in Portland by wearing a mask." I'd be delighted to send you the Business Insider article mentioning that, as well as many other ads and cartoons that were used to promote mask wearing instead of legislating it. And as we all know, it worked. The Spanish flu is no longer with us. I would like to submit as my closing statement. I'd like to submit to the city council to rescind the ordinance to require face masks and replace it with a coordinated effort with churches, businesses and private citizens to create unique and creative ways to advertise mask wearing, social distancing and, and good hygiene. Life House Church, for instance, we could make a poster or website ad saying, get a life, wear a mask. Or my game store, we could say something similar like, there's no respawning in real life. Wear your mask, keep your distance, wash your hands and repeat. I think that that would be a far more effective, enjoyable and frankly unifying way to protect the citizens of Decorah and put an end to this vile coronavirus.
Pam, I can clearly tell you are a minister. Thank you very much. Would you raise your hand if you spoke on Monday? It's okay, just wait, please. Okay, and who wants to speak? You spoke on Monday, so who, I'll let one more person go for speaking here and then I need to refer to this council. So I'll let, and I'm going to call on somebody else because I know you've been in close communication with the city council as well.
If they got new information, if they got new information, we should.
Okay, okay.
Anybody that's here, if they got new information.
Somebody else, but who hasn't spoken this morning? Go ahead. And once again, I'll let you have you just be brief and then, but I want to get what you have to say.
I'm Jordy Meyer from 409 Montgomery Street. And I'd just like to say that I was one of the people that went out and my wife called for the petition. And in that time, there's, I sensed a division, that a crack in the community that is spreading, widening, opening up. Some of the comments that I got from the people that I visited, we're at a crisis. True, you know, but we don't want to be told mandated against our will to wear a mask. Some of the, again, some of the actions that have been taken, performed, observed since this meeting on Monday night, it's, it's not good. It's not holy. It's beyond comprehension. And trying to say that it isn't political, you know, political is wrong, is, is not true. Some of the people that have signs in their yards and they're being commented on by certain individuals, it's, it's not good. We need to, we need to communicate. We need to talk. We need to come together and address this thing, get it over with and go back to life as, as it was. We need to come together instead of starting to divide. So.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming.
You're welcome.
I have one more that, one more that I'll allow that wants to bring different information.
I think you got Darrell back in the corner.
Okay, and then I'll do one other one.
Mayor, there's, there's somebody that asked if they can talk from outside of town in the chat, just so you know.
Yeah. I'll allow two in-house and then I'm going to reference to the council to see their option. Go ahead.
My name's Carol Bentley Iverson. I live at 815 Ravine State Decorah. And I just want to read something that the CDC website has. A positive test result shows you may have antibodies from an infection with the virus that causes COVID-19. However, there is a chance a positive result means However, there is a chance a positive result means that you have antibodies from an infection with a virus from the same family of viruses called coronaviruses, such as the one that causes the common cold." All these, all these things are based on tests. And we know the tests are really very inaccurate, accurate, as they're being proven, proven. So all this is being exploded because of tests. If we go to death rates, Iowa, Wisconsin, Minnesota, it's point zero one percent, point zero two percent, point zero three percent. So let's look at, let's look at the facts, and thank you.
Thank you very much. One more. Was it Daryl? No, no offense, Joe. I really like that. Just nod at it.
Hey, good morning. My name's Daryl Hubbard. I'm on 2861 Clay Hill Road, which I live outside the city limits. My property joins it. I know most of you, so thank you for taking my time. When I got this thing on Monday night, which you've done, I, I'm not a Facebook person, but I did put a quote on there. And within 48 hours, I had over 800 comments that were against this mandate. Again, none of us are against wearing masks. It's a great thing. But that's 848 hours, and most of them are Decorah citizens or Wintertown County citizens. This is not a Decorah deal. Again, if a business wants you to require a mask, that's great. We'll respect that. Either wear a mask going there or don't do business there. I will tell you this, Wednesday morning, I went with a walk-on. I had some business over there, went to a car dealership, and we had breakfast with him. And he told me, no coaxing from me, that the best salesperson he's got is the Decorah mayor and the board, Decorah City Council. He has more business coming from Decorah over there. We, I left, I went to a grocery store. No coaxing from me, same comment. The best salesman they got is the Decorah mayor, the Decorah City Council. You guys will lose a lot of business, and you won't get it back. Personally, bottom line, I think this is driven by Luther College. I think you all, if you look on his board, there's probably five or six of you employees, past students there, you're doing this stuff for Luther College instead of the good of the community, and it's hurting. You do that, so I appreciate your time. And Ms. Neal, I don't like being talked to like a little kid. I don't know who you are, but you need to get off your high horse. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm gonna go to the council for advice. If they want to hear more, if they want, are ready to consider.
Well, I think if people have something new to say that's spoke, they should be allowed to speak.
Just a minute. Randy thinks people should be able to speak. I need some input from other people as well.
Pardon me.
Just a minute. Damn, I'm not getting any input from the council, so.
Lauren, this is, oh, yeah, go ahead, Russ.
This is Ross Hadley. Lauren, how many more people want to speak? It's just a time issue.
Raise your hand if you have not spoken either today or on Monday, but want to speak. I have two people, I believe, three people that want to speak that have not spoken either today or last Monday.
One online, two.
And one online.
Two more minutes per.
Yeah, Lauren, this is Johanna. I'm happy to listen to people for sure if they came to speak.
Okay.
You have, I do have to go to work at 7:45, just an FYI.
Okay.
Andy, we've all missed work for a bit, so.
Okay, just please, please.
If he has to be at work at 7:45, Lauren, I'm sorry, but if he has to be at work, I think we also have to be able to speak.
Yeah.
Before we vote.
All right, then, if that's the case, you know that you have other people that have a voice in this matter. So if you're gonna go to the council, you've just gotta know that there are a lot of voices out there that do want to speak at some point in time. All right, now, now, I'll take one more here that has not spoken either Monday or today. Raise your hand. Come right up.
My name's Samantha Frederick, 1303 Michael Drive, Fifth Ward.
Could you tell me your name again?
Samantha Frederick.
Thank you.
I'm saddened, disappointed by everything that is happening in our community at this moment. Some, I have been emailing the council and haven't really got, I've asked questions, gotten answers. They've actually asked me about some specifics that I don't like about the mandate. Again, I'm with wearing a mask when it's needed. I went on vacation, my family wore it when it was needed, and so far, we have not had any issues. People are taking care of themselves. You have woken this mama bear up, and my children are now being affected by this. I have a playground in my backyard that they will now not be able to play at unless they have a mask on. It is sad. It's sad for these kids to go to school, wear a mask. How are these teachers supposed to teach? And yes, I get the teachers' lives are important, too. We are all essential at this point, and we need the teachers, we need the schools, and we need everything. A lot of times, they have said, "Well, we're following what other cities are doing," and I, I get that. We are not a big city. Lots of those cities have their own city health department, and that's where they're getting their information from. Our Wintertown, you know, public health has said, we, yes, we recommend. Everything has been recommended, CDC guidelines recommend. And also with the petitions, you have over 500% of the actual COVID cases are asking for no mandate. And now I see that statistic is alarming.
Thank you very much. You, at this time, is, I'm gonna move to the council with knowing that I continue to get comments and knowing that there's still more voices to be heard. But at this particular time, and this second reading, I want to get to the council as far as looking at, looking at resolution. And also, I want to question you as far as will you consider my amendment and change to the proposed ordinance regarding language to be clearer on the educational aspect of the ordinance? And that particular piece I found at the end is does not change the ordinance, but my reason for doing it was attempt to clarify what the purpose is as you stated it. Do you have any questions on the changing of that statement?
I support the change that you submitted, Lauren.
I do, too.
I would, too.
In that case, just to be clear, and if you're looking at the statement where it used to say that it's an educational forward policy, however, now it'll say the following regulation is not intended to be punitive or stigmatizing and is in the best interest of health, safety, and economic recovery. Public education regarding the importance of wearing a mask to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 shall be a primary purpose. And so I want to make sure that when you go to make a vote or do a motion that you refer to that version. And can you tell me, has that changed, the ordinance number changed at all? It wouldn't have changed, or, okay, I've got it. Okay. So since that's been changed, what is the, and this is a second reading.
Oh, I got some questions.
Okay, this is from, Randy has some questions.
Okay, well, first off, John, did you write this ordinance?
This was a effort, a group effort, I'll put it that way.
A group of who?
Well, it started with city council members and Chad. I don't think I did the first draft of this.
So you have approved this, and it's legal and enforceable with the binding?
Well, I mean, as everybody pointed out, there are questions about whether a city can do this. And I've been clear that there are legal opinions that a city cannot do this. But there are important legal questions about a city being able to do it. So there's two. People talk about AG's, AG opinions. There's been two, and they're informal, they're not enforceable, but they're given great deference. One of them was on shelter-in-place ordinances back in March or April. The second one in June was specifically about the authority of local government to issue mask mandates. But there was an important analysis that was left out. And I think we talked to any attorney that knows municipal law, it's an important analysis that hasn't been done by AG's office, and that's the authority of the city under home rule. Doesn't necessarily mean that the city can do it, but when we talk about those AG opinions, which says at the end, this is an unofficial opinion, informal. Municipal attorneys say, "They didn't do us any favors, because they left out the most important thing." Now, there's also an argument, a very strong argument, that a governor has very broad powers. But that, in, in an emergency situation, but that does not still answer the question of whether a city has that authority. And there, there is a defensible position. I would say it's an uphill fight, you know, to be fair, but there, but, but there is a very defensible position that a city has the authority to do that. I'm trying to lay it on the line. Do I approve the ordinance? That's not necessarily my role. I give you my advice. And in this, in this case, you know, you know the, the issues that are out there. And the only way we're gonna know if it's truly enforceable is if it ever gets challenged. And it could happen a couple of ways. The governor could try to sue, sue the city. Or somebody that, that got fined, of course, could challenge, could challenge that. So far, I haven't seen where the governor has legally challenged Iowa City or Dubuque or Johnson County, and I haven't seen any other lawsuits. So until a court speaks on this issue, it is, we don't know how a court will rule on this and look at it. So I, I, I can go into more detail on it, but I think generally speaking, you get the idea that there, there are important questions about the, about an ordinance like this, but also whether the governor is overstep the bounds and prohibiting this thing. So I, I, Randy, I'm probably not answering your question, but I'll answer your question by saying, yeah, I've reviewed it, and that's my opinion on it.
All right. Second question, buildings not open to the public, are they exempt?
No, if you look at, so I think if you look at paragraph one there, it says, "All persons present within the city of Decorah to wear a face covering that covers their nose and mouth when inside a business building or public space is ordered below until further council action." Now, number two, some people might say, well, that says, you know, only if, talks about customers and workers. If I had to interpret it, I would say, well, we're not specifically carving out a, a business that doesn't allow walk-ins. So if that's the intent, that should be clarified in there.
Correct, because St. Benedict's School is not open to the public, and their plan that was approved by their educational board was masks are worn in the common areas as they're entering school, and when they're in the school, once they get into the classroom, they can take them off, because they can social distance in the classroom. Now, we're telling them that they have to wear masks all day long in their classrooms.
Well, Randy, you said that they could social distance, right?
Right, but they're indoors.
No, okay, but then it goes, it does go on when you look in number two. It says, "When the individual is within any area open to the public or within six feet of another person." So I would say, no. If there's social distancing, six feet apart, it doesn't matter if you're inside or outside, doesn't, you don't have to wear a mask.
So if I social distance in any store downtown, I don't have to wear a mask?
Yeah, if you maintain six feet of.
Or we don't have it.
And you don't have to do it indoors.
So this is moot.
Well, okay, I, I, customer is different, though. So that, so it says customers are required.
I'm gonna just ask that the council be able to discuss. I, with all due respect, there needs to be a process here for them to be able to discuss and come to a conclusion. I really appreciate that.
So if you want to clarify that, that should be clarified. But when I go on and read it, it says, "Customers are required to wear a face covering before entering the business, and must wear the face covering until exiting the business." So in that situation, the customer continues to have, doesn't talk about, doesn't talk about students at St. Ben's? No, not specifically, not. Unfortunately, you know, sometimes when you write these things, you don't think about every single possible situation that it can apply to. And with experience, if, or somebody points it out, maybe you, maybe you clarify that.
So we should make a change and exempt all school buildings and property? And let them make their own rules on their properties?
That's, if you, I mean, that's certainly.
There would be a point of clarification you're suggesting?
Well.
That's something I want to add to this, for that specific, but I'm sure there's other examples in here. You know, if you can maintain social distancing in a building as a customer, why do you have to wear a mask? That's my point.
Okay.
And if you did that, you'd have to start with the first reading, because that's a, that's a, well, a change.
That's fine.
Do you have any others with that there?
Well, I just got a comment because it was brought up here while we were talking about the social, about the community divide over this with businesses and non-masks. There was no issue in this community with businesses that chose to require masks or request people wear a mask when they come into their business. After Monday night's meeting, it has exploded. And I have all the respect in the world for the businesses that chose to ask people to wear a mask. I wear a mask when I go out in public. That's my choice. And I, I just do not support a dictation of how we live our lives.
Thank you. Other council people? If you're, you're clear, and you want to make a motion for ordinance 1257 to approve the second reading, I need input.
This is Lou. So I would have moved to approve a second reading.
As amended?
As amended?
As, yeah, as amended?
Correct.
Thank you. I have a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made, seconded by, discussion.
I would like to say that I don't think us going through this process and adopting this in any way stops our consideration of ways to improve it or issues that we've heard people talk about. For example, how long does this thing last? I think that's something that the council will continue to be aware of and recognize when situations warrant it, that it's possible to rescind.
Thank you.
I would not, I, I, I think that's really an important point. I think part of, part of the frustration that I'm hearing from people, and I understand it, is the speed of how this ordinance has come to pass. As a council member sitting here, it doesn't feel fast to us, because we've been thinking since March about what can we do to protect our community, and had many different discussions throughout that time about masks and mandates, and what are, what are our options? And I realize that everyone doesn't tune in to every meeting that we have or come to our community betterment meetings where we've discussed this, or get every text message and every email that we get from every constituent. But I also recognize that we are, as a country, as a state, and as a community, in a public health emergency. And if government is to serve us, we have to be able to be nimble enough that we can respond in a way that is both protective, proactive, and in some ways nimble, right? The ability to, to look at something and say, okay, this is what we need right now. And I think what we were asked is that right now, where we are, and the number of cases that we have, we need a mandate, because while there are lots of people doing a good job wearing masks, the truth is, we don't have community widespread buy-in of wearing masks. I can give. I can give hundreds of examples of where I walk downtown and I don't see people wearing masks at walk-up windows or indoors. Um, and I don't, you know, it's to say that we see where mandates are better outcomes than when there, where there are places where there are mandate, where there are no mandates. And so I guess I feel like if your, your point about being nimble and making adjustments is necessary, uh, is important. But it's also important that we move ahead with something that we know works.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council members?
I've been following this pretty carefully in the news and I, I know that just in the last week or two, the federal task force has recommended that as many as forty-eight counties should, should mandate masks in Iowa. That's over ha, or nearly half of our counties. Uh, and then there are other, another seventeen cities that need to clamp down. We may not be a metropolitan area like, like some others, but we are a college university town and we have a lot of people going to be coming here, uh, coming back here in the next few weeks. This is really an important thing, I think, for us to do, uh, to, to stave off, uh, growing case numbers. Uh, if you haven't been following the, the Winnebago County numbers, you should be because they are blowing up right now. They're going up increasingly every day and, uh, we need to do something.
Anybody else?
I just want to let people know that I've, that I've heard them. Um, I, I deleted Facebook, uh, on Tuesday just because it was, it was a feedback loop of hostility. Uh, since then, I've had about a fifty-fifty, uh, or maybe even a sixty no, forty yes. Um, group of people contacting me. And I'm going to vote no today uh, because I hear you and I am elected to represent the people. It is not my personal opinion. My personal opinion is we are in a healthcare crisis. I know of two businesses that have shut down since over the weekend and I believe that there's a, uh, if not an outbreak, a enough people, both employees and residents in a, in a care facility uh, in our community, that it, we very well may have more deaths. So while I hear lots of people saying, I recommend a mask, but it really troubles me that you can't make that leap from volunteer to civic choice, and I get it. But to the point of the gentleman who lives on Montgomery Street, it has become a political issue and divisive. And, um, perhaps the communication and involvement of the community in the process uh, has not been to everyone's liking, um, but yet it's a healthcare crisis. So I will vote no today in hearing people unless we can put a review date on uh, saying, um, we recognize that this is a healthcare crisis. We're doing this because of the schools and, uh, the two thousand Luther students who will be coming to town. Um, so if we can put a, a review date on this, I'll vote yes, but if we can't put a review date on this, I'll vote no.
So I'm okay if we add a review date, if that's what it takes. I mean, if you want to review it in a month, if you want to review it in two months.
I think I'd have to, John, if that changes that, that ordinance enough that that would have to be revisited and started again.
Uh, yes, but I will tell you this, there's nothing to say that you couldn't just have a first read, you had to do all these revisions and start with the first reading today. You, I just would not, I would not, um, more changes you make, the more substantive is. Uh, and I, I, uh, I caution against doing that and I would not endorse that, but that is as a second reading. There's nothing to say that you couldn't make these changes now and make it a first reading.
So if I'm listening to you right, they could make the changes and it would actually be a first reading, which means it's then followed by a second and third reading, correct?
Yes.
But can we wave, can we make it a first reading and wave the second and third?
Yes.
Yes.
Just a minute.
Yes, you can. And the difference here from some of our other ordinances uh, is because some ordinances, uh, require by law, uh, published notice and public hearing. And when we do that, we put the body of the ordinance into the notice. And in that case, I would not endorse any type of substantive change after that's been published. And you have a first reading because when a public hearing is required, the idea is you're giving people time to review this ordinance and, and understand what it's about before you vote on it. And it would not, in my opinion, be, uh, fair or appropriate to then change what you're voting on at that point without republishing notice. But that's not the case. We don't have a publication requirement and frankly, because this is the type of, uh, ordinance that is unique, you know, no, in Iowa, we've never had to do this, at least, I don't know, maybe in nineteen eighteen, somebody did. But, uh, so we're kind of out there. Uh, and I treat it like any other ordinance that doesn't have a publication requirement. On a first reading, uh, you, you could change it before you make that motion to approve it.
Can we, I have a question. Can we, rather than change the ordinance, can we just agree on a, a review date? Right? Does a review date actually have to be in the ordinance, or can we say, we're going to pass this ordinance today? And then we're going to review it on, you know, December first or November first? And it doesn't have to be within the ordinance and then we're not changing the ordinance?
It's not an action item. Yeah, well, Randy brings up, it's not an action item. I, I, I don't think that could be part of your motion for approving the ordinance. Uh, that doesn't mean you couldn't take a straw poll that's non-enforceable. You know, it's absolutely non-enforceable, but you know, if you, if you agree to it, but if somebody backs out of that, there's nothing requiring the council to bring it back on that date. Um, for the very reason that, again, you're not including it in the ordinance itself and, uh, not necessarily an agenda item that you.
Okay, thanks.
But.
Ross, I'm wondering about your comfort level with something like, um, council direction to staff to see this on an agenda on November fifteenth, for example. Um, similar to other ordinances that we have on the books that don't have, um, sunset clauses, but we have a commitment to asking ourselves if this should be, um, considered again, or should we, uh, create an opportunity on the agenda for, um, edits or rescinding, rescinding to happen?
I guess, I guess knowing that there's an end game, uh, is, is important. That was the feedback that I heard from people was that this was not something that was just go, ongoing forever. Um, but yet was a, if it was based on science, that we were reviewing it based on caseload or, or whatnot. So I, I guess I'm okay. I don't know the, i- if it can't go in the ordinance, I'm okay with, with council action at a fir, at a future time. I just didn't know how to, I didn't know the best way to do that. And if staff has recommendations, then I guess we can go from there.
If we could, if we could agree to just have this ordinance on the agendas going forward so that we could act quickly to rescind it if we need to, um, I'm, I would be okay with that too. Would that work?
You can do that. This is Chad. And just to be clear, what John is saying is if you want an end date in there, like November fifteenth, you can put it in there on, um, on page two, under the now therefore, but you need to start with a first reading. And you can do that. Or Kirk's suggestion, or Johannes', that you come back periodically or add a date and time on the agenda and revisit.
We would do that at church every month.
I am, I am happy with the, just directing staff to put it on an agenda, but I, I would prefer we did not go back to a first reading. Again, based on my comment about trying to be nimble to be proactive. Uh, as Kurt said, we are, uh, potentially facing quite an outbreak here, and I guess I'd rather see people in masks than waiting again another month.
I do have a, I do have something that I want to comment on. In the fact with the main purpose, first of all, being education. Secondly, in light of how many people have come forth, I don't remember in the last three years that I have been at this table where that's the case. And thirdly, it is clear to any school district, either here or in the county, that we are concerned about their welfare and people should be wearing masks. When we initially talked about this, we said we would do a community campaign. And you did reference in your first resolution about following the Public Board of Health. You have the potential to be able to have a community-wide campaign. And if you would go with a resolution first, knowing you've got a mandate in your pocket later on, when it gets worse, and be able to allow people to work with the businesses, I'm more than willing to work with any business. I'm more than willing to work with any campaign strategies. And I'm guessing I would help. I just would like, I'm not sure the, the, especially economically, if the divisiveness outweighs what we could be doing if we were not moving ahead at the break speed, even if you would hold a number one meeting, I mean, uh, let's say you had a revised first reading at the, on Tuesday, September eighth, that included all the questions and tried to clarify. There is so many things we have not talked about that I have heard as far as how do I do this? What does this work? And I'm talking about businesses. I'm talking about childcare. I'm talking about, uh, people older, it's even very confusing for the vulnerable population. So, so I'm, my recommendation to the council is to look at it and bring it back so that when you're bringing it forth, it isn't so divisive. Thank you.
Lorraine, it, it's confusing to me. It's confusing to me, Lorraine, this is Ross Hadley, that you, you know, that was a great, it was a great political speech and I, and I echo your sentiments in some ways. But that sounds like you don't want to pass this and you, and you wish to work more toward a common resolution, which I think would be good if people actually did it, but we passed the resolution of, of support before and we still see quite a few people not wearing masks and infection. Um, you know, if Tim and Rich and Mr. Hubden were to use their collective power of their respective congregations and, and constituents that they also share, um, you know, working together obviously would be the, would be the choice solution. But you, Lorraine, I don't understand what you're asking for when, you know, you wrote a, you wrote an amendment to this piece, but now what, what are you, what are you proposing?
Well, Ross, I'm going to say adriftfully is the fact that we, we also stated in the first resolution that you were going to look at the public health, which is, if you were going to look to combine and unite, then we would go along and work with that. The second thing is there has been no conversation. I've gone out and talked to people about him, you know, a campaign and pulling together. But we have not done any organizing in that fashion. And not having the time to at least be able to try that, even if it were one month, but continue the conversation. Economically, you know, from a business standpoint, how precarious the economy is right now. And it's how do you balance getting the word out for public health in a positive way and still be able to work with the businesses to be able to allow them to get whatever revenue they're going to get in, and you know as well as I do that the revenue intake for this period or even since January is a lot less than what your revenue was a year ago.
Right, but that doesn't have anything to do with the mask mandate, Lorraine. I mean, we only suggested the mask mandate on Monday. You know, if my sales were down, uh, you know, if people said, oh, you're, your business is down because people are going to walk on, well, that would have been Monday and Tuesday. What, if, if we don't pass this, what are you going to do as mayor to make sure that we, that we as a community move forward with a public health emergency?
Yeah, wait, can I, can I just make one comment? We've had a recommendation for over a month. We've been telling people to wear masks since March and that's not.
Emily, just a minute. What I'm willing to do is I'm willing to go out to businesses. I'm willing to look at the names on that. I'm willing to pull together people, not only in the community of Decorah, but actually countywide. And we've talked about this countywide as well, although this is only for Decorah. And bring people together to say, how can we do this as a community? And successfully encourage people to wear masks and what that looks like. I will put my boots on the ground and be able to do that.
Would we get that?
Talk to the, are you going to talk to the people who haven't come forward because they're afraid of the people who are threatening them, who yell at them for wearing masks? Are you going to talk to the people who have emailed me thanking me for a mask mandate because their child is immune compromised? And they feel like they can't go downtown to get ice cream because people don't wear masks? Are you also going to deal with all of the people who get sick because we aren't wearing masks in this community? Give me a break. Science says, the best researchers says, epidemiologists say, wear masks.
You know, I will do the best that I can. We have a small community here. This is not, this is not a large community compared to where the, the rates are among us. We have the ability in this community to work together to be able to encourage other people that are coming into our community to positively affect, enjoy what they're doing to put, put their masks on in a positive way versus punitive. At very least, your legality and what you're standing on, on this mandate, you have a potential. It's a potential that you would be able to do this. But in this political atmosphere, that potential is, is a risk for everybody that's involved as well. I am willing to do what is ever needed. And if you want to pass names on to me where I can talk to them, and part of it is communication. The people I have talked to call me in anger, but if you communicate and talk to them, they are reasonable and this community will work together. I am confident in that. If you allow, you could give me a, a limit, say a month. I don't care what you give me, but allow me the chance or allow the community the chance to respond to some of the things that they are very concerned about. I know you have to make a decision and, and that, I know that you stand clear and confident in your decision. But I think there is room for reevaluation and there's room for looking at things from a different angle.
A week ago, we were on a call where our hospital, our schools, Luther College, um, even our police chief. Um, everyone said that they were in support of a mandate because they see the benefit, because they traveled to California, they were in South Carolina. They've been to New Jersey, Pennsylvania, places where there are mandates and they see them working and they see people thriving and businesses open. We had two businesses close this week. I guess.
And I, and I was just in Wisconsin and, uh, on vacation and the mask mandate was in effect there. And everybody just dealt with it. Minnesota's the same way. Um, but it is the, it's the political division of the community that bothers me. Um, and I think if we just have this in our, have this in our back pocket and we, you know, we've listened to people. Uh, and if. And if there's a, if there's a larger outbreak, either we implement it then, or we implement it now and we have the, we have the revision date or the, the review date. But I think people need to know that we, I, I just want people to know that we've heard them. And either we, we hold this as a, this is what we're doing if we see a larger community outbreak, now that people know we've been talking about this clearly. Or we approve it today and we review it in a, in a shorter time.
I think one of the things, to be clear, the Minnesota people have a governor that actually stated the mandate. I can't speak for the Wisconsin people.
Wisconsin as well.
Yeah, Wisconsin.
And also, people are, people would love to have a mask mandate. They do not say how you work with that, or guys, they wish that that was there. They, they, they would like to have something that is proactive. But I'm not completely sure, and I'd be willing to go back to them, if it divides a town economically in this particular time period? Or how we positive, I'd be go back and talk to them, how can I positively get recommendations from your organization that would help in this community-wide campaign? Okay, we have a.
This is, this is Johanna, and I just wanted to add a couple of words in addition to things that I've said in previous meetings. One of the things that is important to me about the timeliness of moving forward with the face covering requirement is because of the dates of our school systems opening and our Luther College students coming home. The August numbers do show an increase in COVID cases in Winneshie County. And what those numbers show to me is they are a reminder that community spread is occurring in our community. And we are days away from probably the single action that will happen that will bring on one day, hundreds of individuals together. And, and, and really, in the space of just a couple of days, interconnect all of our families in a way that we have been, everyone has been working very carefully to social distance over the last several months. And so when I hear the discussion of postponing or keeping a requirement in our back, back pocket, the scenario that plays out for me, the worry that grows, is that we have, we have openings of schools and colleges. We come back together while community spread is present and our case, case rates go up at a faster rate. Our positivity test rate goes at a, up at a faster rate and we start getting closer to that 15% positivity rate that looks like our schools needing to go back to entirely virtual online learning. And that there may be the chance of death coupled with those increased cases. If we don't act and, and any of that happened, I, I think we're going to struggle, looking back and realizing we had an opportunity to take action now. I would rather be safe than sorry. I would like to think about in times where things are very difficult, where things that we wish were not politicized become politicized. In, in these times, I look to government and to our body to make tough decisions on behalf of all of our citizens. And in this decision, I would encourage us to hold health as our, as our priority and the thing that we need to value. What I, what I would propose is that we do move forward with this face requirement, face masking requirement, taking concepts and the, the offering, Ross, that you brought to the table, that this becomes time limited, that we assign ourselves a date to return to look at this. I would propose November 15th. And, and we take the better safe-than-sorry route. Best-case scenario, scenario, people continue to wear masks. We feel better about wearing masks. People who have been, who have felt pushed around because they were or were not, don't have to feel that because the decision's been, been made for our community. And we will be able to open our schools. We'll be able to have, welcome Luther College students back. We'll have a similar and equal experience in all of the businesses that we shop in. And our case numbers don't change, right? And we will be able to make the decision to say, we don't need this anymore.
Can, and, and I know this is odd, but can I get a vocal yes or no from the people that spoke? Would they be supportive of the ordinance if we had a, if we had a review date in it? And knowing that we're looking at the metrics between now and then? If we, if, if it's, if it's effective, would we, if, if, if we show that it works positively and we rescind it in November, would they be supportive of this action?
They, they.
No.
No. I have a motion on the floor. I have this, I have a motion on the floor. I have a second. And if the council's done discussing, I will call for roll call.
I think we also have another amendment op, being offered in terms of number 15, putting in number one on the now therefore.
Say that again?
Yes, no.
I don't actually understand your comment.
This is Luz, and I have heard an amendment being suggested under number one that as ordered until the council takes action to review on November 15th.
We can't, we can only, we can't, we just, we just need to agree that we're going to look at it then.
We can, we can, we can review it every week or every two weeks if we wish.
Okay, I'm going to refer to John on that because I want to make it clear to you that then you are really looking at a first reading if you make those changes today.
We got it.
I'll make that change.
It's clear.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. There's a motion on the table to approve the second reading, right?
Yes.
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 Okay, and do you do that by vote, John?
No, I gotta go to our city council rolls, but the person who made that motion may withdraw it.
Okay, so if you're clear, there's been a motion on the second reading and there's been a second. And now the person who made that motion for the second reading needs to withdraw. And then you will be making the change on that first reading. And then you vote, you will be voting on the first reading.
This is Johanna. My recommendation is that we vote on the motion on the floor and provide verbal direction to staff for frequent revisiting of the ordinance between now and November 15th. Not, not making an amendment and returning to a, a new reading of a new ordinance.
Thank you, Johanna.
I, I think, I think you have to, I think that's John's recommendation, not mine. I was just reiterating with John, you have to vote on this emotion that's here now.
Or who made it has to pull it.
Or whoever amended that, put that in, the date in, has to pull it off from being voted on.
No, who, you have a motion to waive the second by Luz. Luz would need to withdraw his motion on the second reading if you're going to consider a substantial change to the ordinance. Luz would not agree to withdraw the motion. Okay, so you're going to vote on the second reading with no date?
Correct.
Okay. Now, are we all clear?
Yes.
Yes.
You ready, you ready for the roll?
Roll call.
Luz.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Chisel.
No.
Carlson. Carlson?
He said aye.
I said aye. Bergen.
Aye.
Hadley.
And this is with staff review, correct? Nod.
No.
It's not part of the motion, but it's the understanding on the side.
Yes.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one to waive the sec, or for the second reading.
This is Bergen. I move to waive the third reading and adopt.
Second.
I got Luz as a second.
That's insane.
So we have, who made the motion?
Bergen made the motion to waive the second, third, or waive the third reading and adopt, and Luz seconded.
Okay, discussion? I just encourage you to go to the third reading on Tuesday, September 8th. For allowing, at least allowing me to go around and talk to people as well. It's only a recommendation. Any further discussion? Any further discussion on this motion?
This is Bergen. Respectfully, Mayor, I believe that we more than offered you time and the authority and support to do such community action with Resolution 3013 passed earlier this summer. And I share, I share regret that less action around educational campaign was happen, was occurred or progress was made during that time. And I, I lack confidence in anything changing drastically in that regard in the next 14 days. With that said, a repeat of my earlier comments about the time sensitivity and the reasons that I feel called to make this decision today.
I would also like to, I would like to say that people need to be aware that in Winneshie County right now, we have a 9% positivity rate on testing, and that's not very good. That's all. We can, we can do better.
My only comment, Johanna, is that in life, I had no clue how many people were going to be coming forward and how many businesses were tapped in. And I understand, I respect the, you know, whatever it is you choose to vote on, but I'm just wanted to make it clear where it's at. Thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Bergen.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Chisel.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hadley.
Aye.
Motion carries to waive the third reading and adopt. The ordinance is adopted.
Would you stay, would you stay with the.
The next step is for the ordinance to be published before it becomes effective.
Move to adjourn.
We have motion to adjourn.
So moved.